So it's nice to see Madeline. For some reason, Zoom decided to do an update today where it gave us some interesting features that we're just kind of recognizing. So we'll play along. I'm seeing all the new buttons on the bottom on my screen and the buttons that I'm used to see disappearing. So it'll be an interesting night tonight.
I'm also noticing that I was able to join without having come in through being a attendee as opposed to a participant that I just went directly to being an attendee. So I'm not sure if people who are, I don't know, it sounds like if we're, that may not be an issue, but it is a little surprising.
Yes. We will check, we will check into that. Mr. Chair, you have six members. You have a quorum, but if you would like to give it another minute, you can do so. And Mr. Chair, if I may, given that the Zoom setting is a bit different tonight, if I could just have a minute or two to clarify with folks that are signing on.
Of course.
Thank you. All right, seeing that it's a minute after seven, I'll do some housekeeping before the chair opens the meeting. I want to apologize to those who are signing on. We're having some Zoom update issue. It looks like we're not able to run a webinar format tonight. So if I can ask all the planning commissioners to keep your video on, but to turn off your audio until you want to talk, please raise your hand. So Madeline can call your name to speak. If you're an applicant or staff person, please keep your video and audio off. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. We don't have a way to control or mute you tonight, so we ask for your cooperation. And again, like I said, we live in this ever-evolving Zoom world. If I had learned everything I know about Zoom a year ago, I thought I'd be done. But again, they surprised me again today with something else. So thank you for our cooperation. We'll just see how it goes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the September 7th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. To all of you who are attending virtually, thank you for joining us. Please know that we want to hear from you. If you are in the audience and would like to address the commission during public comment for items not on, for items on the agenda, there are two options. For those of you using Zoom, please use the raise your hand button. And when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted and given three minutes to address the commission. If you're joining us by telephone, you may address the commission by dialing star nine. When it's your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and given three minutes to address the commission. Once again, you may only speak once per agenda item. Okay, roll call, please Pamela.
Chair Biassodi.
Here.
Vice Chair Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Dorazzo.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lethan.
Here.
Commissioner Madden.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. And Commissioner Morgan, would you be so kind as to lead us in the pledge as Madeline puts the flag up for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You are.
We next have the approval of the minutes, August 17th, 2021. Anyone carry a motion or comment?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of 7:21.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion and second. Pamela, roll call vote, please.
Chair Biassodi. Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Dorazzo.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethan.
Aye.
Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So we have item one, comments on, or public comments for items not on the agenda. Once again, for the folks at home on Zoom, please use the raise your hand button. And for the folks on the phone, star nine, this is for comments for things that are not on the agenda. If anyone would like to address the commission. Do we have anyone this evening?
We do not have any speakers.
Okay, very good. Then we'll move on to item two, which is the announcement of conflict of interest. Anyone have a conflict this evening?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to make a proposal to take an item out of the order before you do the conflict of interest. Planning commissioners, so we would like to recommend the second item on the agenda, item 4B, which is 271 Al Camino, to be continued to September 21st. So this item will have a more time for staff to do evaluation and also make the staff report available to the public and also the planning commission to evaluate. This is a project that has been going on in the community for some time. Want to make sure that sufficient resource has been given before the decision is rendered. So if I can make that request and Mr. Chair, you can take a vote on that continuous request. And then this will be continued to a date certain, which is September 21st.
Okay.
Do I need to make a, does somebody need to make a motion to this effect? I am happy to propose a motion that we continue that item until 9:21.
Thank you. And would someone like to second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Chair Biassodi.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Dorazzo.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethan.
Aye.
Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Very good. Okay, thank you Pamela. And we'll move back to item two, which is the announcement of conflict of interest. Does anyone have a conflict this evening? No? Okay. Item three, public hearings. 1769 Keynes Avenue, it's a request for a use permit to allow residential addition to exceed the floor area ratio by more than 50%. And staff report, please.
Evening Commissioners, my name is Brandon. I have a little bit of a sinus cold going on, so forgive me if I'm not on top of my game tonight. But I have for you a request for a use permit to allow residential addition at 1769 Keynes Avenue to exceed the existing floor area by more than 50%. This, this project does qualify for a secret exemption based on existing facilities. And the staff does recommend that planning commission approve this use permit based on the findings and conditions of approval shown in the staff report. So this lot in Keynes Avenue is a 5216 square foot lot in Mills Park, which was subdivided in 1948. The current home has two bedrooms and one bathroom with 1,545 square feet. In the general neighborhood, there are several other homes that have had similar large two-story additions. So staff does not feel that this is incompatible with that. This project did go before the Architecture Review Committee in July. There was discussion about the overall height and the requirements for providing additional parking spaces. There was one public comment made to that effect as well. However, staff confirmed that this proposed home does comply with all height and parking requirements stipulated in the municipal code. And after receiving the staff report and presentation, the ARC members did forward the use permit to the Planning Commission 3-0 for approval. So this project is an addition of 999 square feet, which represents a 65% increase in the home. There would be 425 square feet added to the first floor and 574 square feet added to the second floor. This would bring the house, the entire home into a total of three bedrooms and three bathrooms with the existing one-car garage remaining. It, I have to note, there is also a basement level ADU accessory dwelling unit proposed of 459 square feet with one bathroom and one bedroom. This is not part of the use permit and is not subject to the use permit review per state laws of 2020. So despite the overall 65% increase to the home, it is not exceeding lot coverage or maximum floor area requirements. And all, all additions will maintain the current setbacks in the front and the side, as well as maintaining exterior materials of like kind. The staff does believe that the proposed addition will be compatible with the neighborhood based on other large two-story additions that have occurred in the neighborhood. Also, to cover the parking requirement, which was brought up in ARC, the, the new parking requirement from March 2020 does allow any addition of over 250 square feet to a house that has only one covered off-street parking to provide one uncovered off-street parking, which this project satisfies with the spot in the driveway. In addition, this project follows all residential design guidelines, including the daylight plain requirement required of all two-story additions. While the daylight plain requirement is only required to be shown front to back or side to side to two sides of a project, this project does show that the daylight plain requirement is met on three out of the four sides. So overall, staff finds that this project to be satisfactory in following all requirements of the municipal code and the residential design guidelines, as well as being attractive in design. Staff finds that this use permit meets all findings contained in the San Bruno Municipal Code section 12.112 on use permit findings that must be made. And staff does recommend that the planning commission approve this use permit. And that is the end of my presentation and I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I believe the owner and the applicant slash designer are also here as well.
Thank you, Brendan. Do we have any questions for staff? No? Okay.
Sorry, yes, I have a question. What is the impact on traffic and potential increased congestion?
Mr. Chair, I believe we should wait until the public hearings open.
Yeah, that's a question from the public. So we'll hold off on the comment for just a moment if you would. Is there any commission questions for staff? No commissioner questions, all right. Then may we hear from the architect then, please?
Hello, can you guys hear me well? Great, hi, my name is Ricky and I represent Alexan Architects. Thank you Commissioner, thank you Brendan for explaining this project. It was basically Brendan covered everything. And I would just like to add some personal touch on this project. So the owner, Kenrick, was a longtime resident of San Bruno. And he lived in San Bruno for a very long time and he plans to live in San Bruno for even a longer time. So he would like to raise his family, he has young kids and he has no to parents. So this is calling for the addition, for the addition of existing houses living in. So that's, this is basically the reason why we're doing this project and why there is necessary to add such a square footage to the existing house. And this is basically all I wanted to add. And thanks again Brendan for explaining the entire project. Thank you very much Commissioner Brendan.
Very welcome. Brendan, is there anyone else from the architect side or the owner side that would like to speak to us?
I believe the owner is also in the meeting, but I am not sure if he wishes to speak or not.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I didn't have too much to add. I just wanted to say that my family's kind of outgrown the current two-bed, one-bath house. And it's definitely fallen with the age of the house. It doesn't really need a lot of updating. And the ADU is really planned for my parents as they age and get older. So yeah. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Right, are there any more questions from the commissioners before we open up public comment? Comments? Okay, Madeline, how about we open up the public comments, please?
Madeline, you're on mute.
You're muted, Madeline.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to unmute Elsa and then I muted myself. Elsa, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Go ahead.
So anyways, I live right next to Kendrick and so this is all news to me. And so like, I just want to make sure, like, I understand what's going on. So for the ADU, which side of the house is that going to be built? And then also, because I'm just more conservative, it's going to be on the side that's next to my house. How far down? And I'm just more so concerned about the structural, you know, structural changes because it's the wall, the distance between our walls are actually quite close. And then second of which then is related to when Brendan mentioned that the setbacks are maintained. What does that mean?
Okay. Did you have any other questions for us? We'll reach out to the staff and see if we can get those answers for you.
That was it, because I just want to understand. And then, because I'm more concerned about if the, you know, if I, it's more so that the, the construction, whatever's going to be going on, is not going to weaken the, I guess, you want to say the, the ground that's between, between our houses? And then for the, for the setbacks, I just want to understand what that is because, you know, is that going to be, if it's maintained, does that mean that doesn't, the box of the house doesn't change? Or, or will there be changes to the, the outline of the house on a, you know, when you look from aerial view down? Because then how far back? Because will I be losing any of my views?
Gotcha. Okay. There's only one opportunity per item for you to speak, so does she have any other questions? Because we won't be able to come back to you. Or did we lose her? Okay. Brendan, did you have some answers for those questions or the architect?
I can, I can begin and then the architect can follow up afterwards. Concerning the ADU, I believe that is in the back basement level. However, just, just a reminder that this use permit does not cover the ADU. Based on state law, ADUs must be reviewed ministerially and cannot be reviewed at a discretionary hearing. As far as the setback goes, the front and side setbacks of this project are all being maintained to the current setback. So the, the, the sides and the front are not being extended any closer to the property lines than they are at present. It is only a reduction in the rear. And I believe, as the architect can chime in more about the, this structural aspect, but I believe the entire addition with the ADU and both sets of addition is one solid addition that's being made to the rear and shouldn't have any effect on the current house. But if the architect would like to chime in more on that.
Okay, hi, thank you for the question. So yeah, in terms of the side setback there, the side setbacks are the same. So the only addition, the reduced setback is going to be in the rear. So if you're the adjacent neighbor, the setback shouldn't be a concern. But if you're talking about the view, there is addition to the back. So there is going to be added mass to the existing house. And because we are aware of the fact that this is going to, this is going to add some mass to the back of the, of the existing house. That's why what we did in the design is that we tried to step back. I'm not sure if you guys are seeing any of the renders of the, the, the design, but what we did is we stepped back, we kind of did a wedding kick, stepped back, designed to the rear of the house. So we try to minimize the impact and the shadow that's going to be cast on the, onto the adjacent neighbors. And, and we were also aware that for the daylight thing, we actually satisfied three sides of daylight thing. And the only side that did not satisfy daylight thing was the left side. And to articulate that side of the facade, we actually did some changes in the material. So existing houses stucco and we, we introduced siding. And also we break the colors of that side of the facade. Actually, the entire house is going to be two tones and two materials. So that kind of articulates the facade and adds some interesting stuff to the, to this new house. And for the structure, we're actually just only doing the design, but the owner actually had the soils report done. So if we can get the approval or a conditional approval tonight in this planning commission, we actually have the structural engineer line up to work on the structural aspect of this project. But yeah, we're pretty confident that this project would not weaken the soil or the existing condition of the site and the house. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you both. Brendan or Pamela, would you speak to for just a second on the view ordinance or the lack of the view ordinance? Because she did, was concerned a little bit about losing some view.
Brendan, you want to elaborate?
Yes, so actually, at, at present time, there is no view protection in state of California or in San Bruno. And I believe that would have to be introduced as a voter initiative. If so, but at the present time, there is no view protection in San Bruno or the state.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public out there, Madeline, that would like to speak with us?
Hi there. If it's okay, I'd like to speak.
Yeah, just a second. Madeline? You're muted, Madeline.
Hi, is this Ray?
This is.
Okay, Ray, go ahead.
Thank you.
Hi there. Hi, I'm Ray Colleen. I live two doors up to the, or to the west of this property. I think the, the thing that isn't clear just from watching the meeting is I'd like to understand the distance between the back lot line and the building itself, the structure that's being added on. I'd like to understand if there's any decks that extend beyond the building, right, that are planned. I'd also like to understand the distance between the west side of the lot line and the distance of the, to the addition, right? It'd be great to understand the east side distance between the lot line and the addition. And then finally, it would be great to understand the height of the new, the park that extends beyond the house, right? So the idea here is if I'm standing in my yard and looking east, right? You know, how tall is the, is the, is the building off of the, off of the, of the ground? So because I didn't see any presentation of the, either the elevations or of the proposed addition, it didn't come in the letter that came in the, in the mail today. So I think just to give both my son and I an understanding of, of what would happen. And then the last thing I'll say is, this is the, I think his name is Kendrick, right? Hey man, I'm your neighbor, I'm two doors up. If you're doing an addition like this, like just come by and knock on the door and talk to us. It's much better than having a conversation mitigated through this. You know, I, I did an addition like this and I went and talked to my neighbors and, you know, the addition I did and at the time and talked to at least the people living next to me. And I think I probably, you could probably argue I didn't practice what I preach because I didn't actually get to see you when I came by the people that weren't living there at the time. So, so I feel, I can understand if you say that. But that's all I have. I'd just like to get, get those answers so I can understand. I have no objections to the project as in, I did a similar project as was mentioned and, and, you know, nothing here seems anything different. So best of luck, Kendrick, I get why you're doing it and cheers, man.
Very good, thank you. Would Brendan or the architect like to handle those couple of questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, can I ask Brendan to pull up the plans? And then he can probably walk through the questions that were raised that included in the staff report. So these are, Brendan, I think these are the plans that had been included in the staff report that also is available on the website. All right, go ahead Brendan. Brendan, you're on mute.
Sorry, my, with the Zoom update, my mute button disappeared. Hello again. So let me see. Can you guys see the plans on the screen? All right. So as Pamela mentioned, with all the planning commission items, plan sets are part of the staff reports, which are available online with the meeting information. So I believe here you can see the renderings of the front and back of the home. I believe one of the questions was concerning the, the change from the east and west to the lot lines, which are not being changed, they're maintaining the current setbacks. And I think in the rear, it's being decreased from, I think, 50 feet to 32 feet. In the back, I'd have to check. Let's see. But this is a rendering of the proposed project and from the front and from the rear with the setbacks and facade articulations that Ricky was talking about. And he can also chime in after and provide more feedback on this. So I believe currently, the existing site already has two decks that extend fairly far out to the rear of the house. I think, I believe this, the current setback to the house is close to 50 feet. I'd have to go back and look at that one. And then this is the, let's see. So this will be the addition to the house, which will include a deck. But I believe the deck doesn't go further than the current decks do. And if Ricky is here, can you chime in a little bit on the, the deck and other issues that the neighbor raised, please?
Hi, sure, let me add to that. So, so as Brendan has mentioned, the set, the side setbacks, which are currently six feet, a little more than six feet, they're not changed. So we're keeping the side setback at six feet, more than six feet. The only thing that's changed is the rear setback. So the existing rear setback, the, the distance from the lot line as mentioned by Ray, the distance from the lot line and the existing house is 50 feet, not including the deck. The deck actually extend a lot more if I'm measuring from my cat right now. The existing deck is actually only 15 feet away from the lot line. So the proposed project is actually demolishing all of the existing. So the proposed project is actually demolishing all of the existing deck. And the house, which is going to be the master bedroom and the kitchen, is going to extend from the existing house by eighteen feet. So the house is extended by eighteen feet. And then there is an additional eight feet of deck that's going to extend from the kitchen. So, so actually, including the back, we actually is introducing a further distance from the existing lot line and the fence. So I hope that clears that up. And yeah, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. And Madeline, do we have anyone else in the public that would like to speak to us?
Madeline, you're on mute again.
Sorry, I do not see any speakers.
Okay, great. In that case, can we get a motion from the commission to close the public hearing?
I will move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorozzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move it back to the commission for discussion, a motion and/or a vote. Anyone have comments or a motion?
Through the chair? I just wanted to ask, I'm fairly sure this is the case, but could staff confirm when we send out our public notices, they do pretty clearly say, hey, you can re, you know, you can get more information on our website, yes? So the, I mean, the packet have these extensive diagrams available, and I'm just making sure we aren't notifying people that those are there.
Mr. Chair, if I may, respond to that question. So on the notice that we sent out to the neighbors, there is a link to the planning commission packet. It does not link directly to the staff report, but it does take it to the planning commission general agenda and staff report packet. So the neighbors should be able to find this item on our website, yes?
Pamela, I did have a quick question. It's kind of not directly related to this, but I see this house is on a slope, and it's taller in the back than it is in the front. When we look at projects, where do we measure the height of the building from? The lowest point or the highest point, or how is that determined?
That's a great question, Mr. Chair. So our ordinance actually calls sort of an average height. You don't do a mathematical average. I'll let Brendan elaborate, because it's a really interesting formulaic approach.
Thank you.
So for the San Bruno Municipal Code, the height is measured from the average of the midpoint. So from the, at grade, the midpoint of the grade to the height, it is kind of an average. But yeah, and so this project does satisfy that and is under height limit for all sections of the grade.
Okay, thank you. I just seen a couple of other projects that were on slopes that came by lately, and I was just curious how we measured the height. Okay, Commissioner Harmon, you are working on a motion, or maybe commissioners?
If nobody else has any further comments, I'm happy to make a motion. I would like to move that we approve use permit UP twenty-one zero one one based on findings one to three and conditions of approval one to twenty-four.
Anyone else? Motion? Seconds?
I'll second this.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Madeline, can we get a roll call vote, please? For Pamela here.
Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorozzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen?
Aye.
Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion passes.
Thank you. So item B, two seventy-one Al Camino Real, is continued to next meeting. And that moves just two items for staff.
Good evening, everyone. So before I ask for volunteers, I know everyone's so eager to volunteer for the October Architecture Review Committee, but I do want to clarify a few things, since there has been some interesting event happening. So the agenda does say that the next regularly scheduled meeting for Planning Commission falls on October nineteenth. And you heard me mentioning that we're going to continue, while the planning commission continue to seventy-one Al Camino to September twenty-first. I do want to clarify that September twenty-first was a regularly scheduled meeting. So that's why we were able to put this item and continue that item to the next September twenty-first meeting. But at the time when the agenda was prepared, that meeting has been canceled. So we're on canceling a meeting to continue, and really to minimize the delay on the applicant side. And then, so the next regularly scheduled meeting will be in October. So that's the clarification number one. And I have a sort of an announcement for the commission to know. Madeline's going to go on a medical leave in next week for some time, so we're going to miss her. But she'll be back, and she's going to be a superwoman, all fixed up, ready to serve the planning commission and the city. But we do, we will have a temporary replacement to take on Madeline's role. But I know how supportive you all will be with Madeline's absence, and I do want to let you know in advance.
Thank you.
Lastly, if I can have three volunteers for the October Architecture Review Committee. All right, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Lethen, and Chair Biassodi. All right, now if I can have one more backup, just in case. All right, thank you, Commissioner Dorozzo. I have no more items, thank you.
All right. The next item is public comments for items not on the agenda. Again, if anyone in the public would like to speak to the commission, this would be your moment in time to do so. And Madeline, is anyone out there raising their hand or starving at this?
We do not have any speakers, Chair.
Thank you. We'll move on to items from members in subcommittee reports. Does anyone have anything for us this evening? No? All right. In that case, we are adjourned until September twenty-first. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.